Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, February 6, 2024. If you would please join me by standing and reciting Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if you would take roll call, please.
McIntyre?
Here.
Peter?
Here.
Snell?
Here. And as far as deletions, I don't know that we have any, do we?
No, I don't believe we do.
So I think then if there's a motion, oh, it is loud. If there's a motion for the consent agenda, I'd be open to receiving that.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Second.
Good, second by McIntyre. All those, roll call, please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Snell?
Aye. Okay, claims, item number two. Any questions on the claims?
I have no questions on the claims.
Crystal, do you have any questions?
No, I don't, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims for this session.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, roll call.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Snell?
Aye. Item number three. We have a public hearing regarding a request from Andrew Harris that Warren County consider the sale and conveyance of abandoned railroad bed owned by Warren County. And is there anybody here to speak on it? Dawn?
Good morning.
Morning, Dawn.
At a work session, we previously discussed a request from Just Amir Farms, from Andrew Harris, regarding railroad bed that lies within a parcel of property that Just Amir Farms owns. Parcel number is 290021.
0480.
I have 0260. In any case, I have a legal description for the railroad right-of-way that they would like to purchase from the county.
Just to make sure here, the parcel number that we have listed in is in 0480 on the agenda.
I'm going to read the legal description and the proposed resolution, and that will be correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
I know, it got a different parcel number here, too. Sorry about that.
Okay.
No problem.
Do you have any questions about this part of the, okay?
They're just trying to buy that, or they're just, we're just transferring that deed over to that.
We will quitclaim that property to Just Amir Farms. And I have a resolution, if you'd like me to read it.
I have no issues with it at all.
No, I don't believe I have any. Crystal, did you have any questions?
No, I don't, thank you.
Oh. So I think from that standpoint, unless there's somebody else here that wants to speak to it.
I should state that this was published, notice of this hearing was published in all three newspapers, and I have received no contact from anybody regarding it.
Yes, that's right. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, certainly. I'd like to make a motion to go into public hearing.
Do you have a second for public hearing?
Second.
Motion and second, roll call.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Snell?
Aye, okay. We are formally in public hearing. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this? Seeing and hearing none, we will close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion. Do we have a second? Second, roll call.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Snell?
Aye. Okay, we are done. I believe now we need a motion to approve this conveyance, correct?
Yes, would you like me to read the resolution and then you?
Would you please read the motion, and then one of the supervisors can acclaim that.
The resolution states the following: Be it resolved that the Warren County Board of Supervisors hereby approves the sale of county-owned property legally described as follows: The railroad right-of-way in the southeast quarter of the northwest quarter in Section 21, Township 74, Range 22, west of the 5th Prime Meridian in Warren County, Iowa, 2.75 acres more or less to Just Amir Farms LLC of Ames, Iowa. The said real estate will be conveyed by quitclaim deed.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve that resolution as read.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second, roll call.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Snell?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn.
Now, we're going to move on to item number four, which would be considered the sale of capital assets in the sheriff's office with possible action. Sheriff Kirk, call.
Morning, Lord.
Good morning.
The last few months, we've had a 2019 Durango that developed an electrical issue. And we've had it at a local shop, we've had it at a dealership, and they can't figure out the problem with it. So we'd like to ask the board for permission to push it to auction because it's, we can't keep it running for our use. So we'd ask the board to allow the sale of that capital asset. We had a, if you would remember, I think it was back around October-ish, the original metal detector that was installed in the justice center upon its completion suffered a failure of some sort. And the repair on it, it was decided to replace it, so we have that old unit sitting there. Given its original cost, it's my belief that it's a capital asset, and we'd like permission to advertise it for sale as well.
Do you have any idea what you think you can sell it for?
The metal detector, no, I don't. I mean, I know the original cost. We had a rough estimate on what it would cost just to come up and look at the repair. And unfortunately, we don't have any companies around here locally that can repair it. So that's where we would move to just, you know, try to advertise it in, more than just send it to a local auction. I think it would be more beneficial, but no, I don't.
All right, sorry. It's kind of hard to know on that type of thing, I'm sure, so.
Good.
I don't have any questions, so I have no issues with him placing that up for sale.
Okay.
I'm sorry, we may have to go through the auction even with that.
With that, okay.
Piece of equipment, but we'll check into that.
Okay.
So if the board wants to say yes, wants to give approval for selling those two items, you would have to still, we may still have to go through auction, and I will check in.
Okay.
Okay. Crystal, did you hear that explanation?
I can barely hear Dawn, but I do know what's going on, the sale of the Durango, and there was another.
Yeah, and basically Dawn was saying that we can go ahead and give permission today to the sheriff to sell this, but it still may have to go to auction. And so I believe that potentially it would come back again. Is that what you're seeing? Yes, yes.
No, once you say it's okay, that we can do, they can do that, but the auction is just.
Just your method of sale.
Okay. The auction would be the mechanism by which we might have to follow for code. So if we could have a motion to allow the sheriff to go ahead and auction these or sell these items.
I'll make a motion to approve sheriff's recommendation to try to sell the capital assets in his office as long as it's in compliance with the local codes and law and.
Okay.
You know, if we need to take it to auction for code reasons, then we need to do it that way.
Okay.
That's my motion.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, roll call.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Snell?
Aye.
Thank you, board.
Item five, which is a fund transfer to nutrition. The discussion on this is that we are needing to update, I think, the amount that's in the fund for the nutrition. Is that correct?
Yes, so we have a, it was budgeted for us to do a transfer to nutrition, and it's for $150,000 to make sure they have the fund balance to be able to process their expenses.
Okay. Supervisors, do you have any questions?
I have no questions.
Crystal?
No.
Okay. Could we have a motion to approve resolution with the fund transfer to nutrition?
I'll make a motion to approve an inter-fund operating transfer from the nutrition department, actually from the general fund to the nutrition department.
In the amount of?
In the amount of $150,000.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Okay. Yes, second.
Okay, roll call.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Snell?
Aye. Item six. Okay, let's see here. Consider approval of entrance variance application for parcel ID 27000100800 with possible action.
If you'd remember, I think it was November, Mike Ramey came in, and we talked in a work session about his variance. He wanted preliminary approval before he got his parcel split because he didn't want to go through the zoning process if he wasn't going to get an entrance. He's ready for it now, and as we discussed in November, we don't have any objections to this variance. It's.
As I recall, this is a safer location also.
It's about the only spot that'll work on his parcel, and nothing actually meets the ordinances, but this is the safest location, being on the top of the hill, so.
Any questions?
I have no questions.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the entrance variance application for parcel ID 27000100800.
Do you have a second? I'll second that. Roll call.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Snell?
Aye. Okay, item number seven, which is to consider approval of the general assistance funding guidance for rental utilities and funeral assistance policy with possible action. Joelle, good morning.
This is a request to ask for your approval for a new implemented policy. There currently is not a official policy in place for general assistance in regard to this, so I wrote up a general assistance funding guidance for rental utilities and funeral assistance policy, so I'm asking you to approve and implement that. This policy outlines a request for an increase in the poverty guidelines up to 200%. It also asks for an increase of $100 for rent and utilities. Currently, from the $500 to $600 with a cap of 700 for utilities, and an increase from 300 to 400 for, excuse me, for utilities up to three times in a 12-month period. For the rental, it's 500 to 600 with a cap of 700. It does not change the overall line item budget amounts for fiscal year or fiscal year '25 request. It just would allow us to have a greater impact on those that we're currently serving.
Okay. Are there any questions?
I have no questions.
No.
I think this is in line with what we had talked about previously in our work session. So do we have a motion to approve these suggested amounts as outlined by the folks from general assistance?
I have no questions. I'd like to make a motion to approve the general assistance new funding model guidance for rental utilities and funeral assistance.
Do you want to?
Second.
Yes, and can we include the amounts as they are printed for the request?
It's in our packet. She just read through them, so per the packet and per Joelle's reading, the specifics, I'd include that in the motion.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second, roll call.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Snell?
Aye. Excuse me. We'll go on to now to item number eight. And this is considering the appointment of myself to the North and Middle Rivers Watershed Authority with possible action. This item was, as we've discussed in our work sessions, the North River area is a multi-county, part of a multi-county area that's considering watershed issues, and this affects predominantly the northwest quadrant of the county, which happens to be where I happen to be located. So I had suggested that maybe I should get more active in this and understand a little bit better. So I would appreciate it if we would make that change and formally appoint me as the representative on the watershed authority.
I plan to approve. I have no questions.
I have no questions.
Okay. Is that a motion and a second?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mark Snell to the North and Middle Rivers Watershed Authority.
Is there a second?
Yep, second.
There we go, a second, okay. Roll call.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Snell?
Aye. Item number nine, which is discussion regarding administration building interior project with possible action.
Good morning.
Good morning.
On January 31st, 2024, the facilities committee met with Jason Kaminsky from Allers and Cooney and Nate Summers from UMB to talk about funding strategies for the renovation of this building. The strategies are similar to what the board used when it funded the new county yard building south of town. So what we're, the facilities committee is requesting is permission to engage Jason Kaminsky to get everything up to speed and everything running, asking for the authority of $10,000, up to $10,000 to engage with him. He'll do all the pre-work that's necessary to bring this ultimately to the board's attention and all the documents that we need to get to where the board may want to go.
Okay. Do we have any questions or discussion on this?
I mean, Darren, you've been working with this probably as close as any member of the board.
Yeah, I was fortunate enough to be involved in that meeting, and I'm pretty excited about this project in general. There's been a lot of work, and I guess at this point, I'm just grateful to the team members on the facilities committee. We've had a lot of input from our department heads relative to physical space and functioning of their departments and maybe a new environment. So I think it's been really a good process. It's been painstaking at times. But I, you know, I think this group has done a good job of looking at all the details. So I think from an architectural construction standpoint, we're set. I mean, we are, there's more detail around design, but relative to cost estimations and bringing this project to the finish line, I remain very, very optimistic about that. And, you know, today is just a function of engaging with a, with a partner and partners to get done what we need to get done. And so I don't have any questions on this, but by all means, if the board or the public or any department head has any questions, you know, we're all ears, and we're, we'll be gathering more and more input from, from the leaders here at Warren County and from the employees of Warren County. This is kind of about setting up an environment for our employees and our public to have, you know, safe, modern, functional, efficient facilities. So that's all I got.
Crystal, do you have any comment?
Um, no, I haven't. Has anything changed with, as far as the scope of the work from the first time that we saw the?
Some of the, some of the input that you gave us around like bathroom on the main floor, that stuff has been modified after those meetings.
Okay.
Am I accurate in that, correct? I don't know if we've seen a drawing with the new arrangement.
I don't, I don't think we've done really anything with the design.
No, I was going to say, I think today, as far as our conversation is concerned, we're looking at the financial mechanisms and developing the formats for how we could potentially fund the project, correct?
Right, so that's what Jason is going to do, is he's going to bring together a formal document to you that's going to outline. There's essentially three different ways to fund this. He's going to break all those down for you. He broke them down for the facilities committee, but it's something that he needs to formally bring to the board itself, and then the board will make a decision with regard to if this is something that you want to engage in and which path of the three paths. Obviously, the paths have gotten more complicated with House File 718.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Jason and Nate both understand those.
As well as anybody can.
As well as anybody can.
Yeah.
And they'll steer us in the right direction. And talking about funding like this, it is such a specialized field that it's good to engage in partners that just look at these types of things. So that's why we've gone to them.
Right. And that's why today's discussion that we're having and approval is really just the beginning step of many that are going to follow. And so Darren, your comments about as far as engagement of others, yes, that's allowed us to get to this point, so we have at least a vision. But we've got to also then figure out the technical ways of how we are going to fund this, and then the individual steps that are going to be necessary before we can finally approve everything. So we're not approving the diagram. I just wanted to make that very clear for everybody. All we're doing today would be initially setting up and finding out the alternatives for funding and financially underwriting this project with technical assistance.
Absolutely. This is not greenlighting the project.
No, this is, this is just technical assistance that we're going through, so.
Correct.
Would there be a, how much are you wanting? $10,000 for this contract?
Up to $10,000.
And then to authorize the facilities committee to, or is this for the board that's going to work with the law?
So the board will engage.
The board will engage.
Mr. Kaminsky, to do the process, do the evaluation, and then bring the funding options to the board. I'm sure he will make a presentation to you at some point and lay all three examples out. And then at that point, the board can decide, is this something that you want to go forward with? Is it not? If you decide you want to go forward with it, which of the three paths do you want to go down?
Okay. Darren, would you like to make a motion that reflects what was just stated?
Certainly, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the funding to Allers Law Firm and Jason Kaminsky not to exceed $10,000 to start Warren County down the path of funding solutions for the administration building.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Good, we got a motion and a second, roll call.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Snell?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're moving forward. Thank you. Next item 10 is to consider approval of the Warren County Joint Communications Center 28E agreement with possible action.
I'll speak to this.
Please.
So for some time, Warren County has engaged in discussions about possible alternatives with regard to dispatch, with regard to funding, how it's run, engaging in different partners on moving dispatch forward from where it is. This process has been going on quite some time. First quarter last year, several of us had a conference call with Boone County and talked to their dispatch director on how they went forward and combined theirs into, four entities end up funding the Boone County dispatch. We've looked at many other 28Es that have done this consolidation, including Westcom, and how they've engaged with their partners. During that process, we brought in Indianola. We also brought in Carlisle to discuss whether they wanted to be partners with us. They graciously agreed to get involved and move this project forward. The city managers, myself, Supervisor Peter, have had many discussions with regard to this. And in your packet is a proposed 28E agreement which would form Warren County Joint Communications Center, also to be known as WarrenCom. So I would welcome any questions with regard to it, but I think it's pretty comprehensive on where we would go. One thing I would say with regard to the document itself, it doesn't give a start date. That is intentional at this point, because I want to see what everybody else would, Indianola City Council, Carlisle City Council, this board hopefully approves, and then we will engage in another addendum to this with regard to the start date.
Just to clarify then, the document that we're looking at today, are we the first entity to approve this, and then it's going to go to the others? Or have the others already signed in on this agreement?
No one else has formally signed on to it. Indianola has looked at it. And City Manager Reeves is here, if you want to engage him. I believe Carlisle has also, Carlisle City Council has also been privy to looking at the document, and Devin Markley is here, their city manager is also here. Norwalk was also engaged. I had a discussion with City Manager Nelson earlier in January to discuss several concerns that Norwalk had with regard to, even though they're not formally a partner in this, because they're a member of Westcom, they had several things that they wanted to address. We've addressed those questions, concerns in, in the final product, which is in front of you. So I would anticipate that at some point, it's going to get in front of their city council, and they will hopefully give a resolution of support to this document. Hopefully, at some point down the road, we will convince Norwalk to become a full member in Warren County Joint Communications Center. That would be the goal.
Yeah. Any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just want the public and some leaders here to understand the amount of work that goes into a project like this and the amount of cooperation.
I understand.
I'm sorry?
I said I understand how much work goes into a project like this.
Yeah, right, thank you. Yeah, and everybody, what I liked about this specifically is that this was, this project tried to build consensus really at the very beginning. We went out and visited the local cities, I think, more than a year ago, you know, with this concept. And we brought in and received input from everybody that we could, from every entity that would be touched by this. I think we went around, and it's amazing, if you go.
I don't feel that the rule were represented until two days before it was presented to the public.
Okay. So anyway, I have no, I have no questions with this at all. I think it would be a very good move for Warren County, and I'm in support of it. So that's, that's where I'm at.
Crystal, you were voicing some issues. Would you like to restate those?
Yes, I, I have a concern about paying for membership upon the board, and I have a problem with having fire departments come together for a representative of one of them to be a rural representative because they are not elected, and therefore they're not accountable to the people. So I had proposed that the rural mayors get together and choose one of their own so that that could be the representative upon the board of directors. I hadn't heard anything back from that proposal.
So the board of directors is initially made up of a representative from the board of supervisors, a representative from Indianola, and a representative from Carlisle. Those three representatives have to be elected. However, in Indianola and Carlisle, if a supermajority of their city council decides that they want to have a city manager serve on the board of directors, they can do that. In the original iteration that went to everyone, we did have a portion or a way for rural fire to have membership. That has been stricken from this after listening to concerns of everyone. So there are two members right now that would be appointed by the board of directors. One has to reside outside of the city limits of Carlisle and Indianola, and also has to be served by WarrenCom. So that, by the way, it's designed is that would have to be a rural person. The, the second appointed person can be from anywhere in Warren County that is served by WarrenCom. So it could be a situation where that board of directors picks two people that are in the rural. They could pick an elected from the rural. It's completely up to them how they decide to do it. If, and I should also include that Norwalk also becomes an ex officio or non-voting member of this board, so they can have their concerns, they can have a discussion. So they can have their concerns, they can have a discussion with the board about what they would like to see, what would ultimately bring them into the picture and be a full member of WarrenCom. So those are the things that we've discussed. If we ever have a emergency medical services, they would automatically become a member of it. If we bring in other entities from outside of Warren County, they would also be entitled to membership on the Board of Directors. But that's getting.
What was that last statement?
I'm sorry?
Can you repeat that last statement? Sorry, Doug.
So if somebody from, let's say, County X from one of our surrounding counties decides that they want to become a member of WarrenCom, they could do that. There's a fee to enter into the system. The Board of Directors would determine what that fee is, what's appropriate, and then that entity would gain membership on to the board.
Okay.
Okay.
So the Board of Directors could be made up of, you said, Indianola, Carlisle, a Board of Supervisor. Now, the Board of Supervisor would represent all of the rural citizens, but who would represent the small-town entities?
Well, the Board of Directors is going to pick essentially a rural representative, and that could be a mayor from one of those places. It could be a non-elected person from one of those.
And so would this person be elected? I mean, how are they going to be accountable to anybody else in the rural area?
Well, hopefully, the Board of Directors is going to pick somebody who's responsible and has some integrity to the people that they live around.
And I think they would be represented in the exact same way that the people in the city, I mean, the way every resident in Warren County is treated, by representation.
But if there is a, let's say, New Virginia had a problem, they don't go to the Board of Supervisor, they go to this representative, and they're not elected, how really are they representing them? I mean, they don't have any power to fire them or vote them out or anything. It would be up to the Board of Directors.
Well, ultimately, their Board of Supervisor's representative, I mean.
The Board of Supervisors is only over the unincorporated rule. The Board of Supervisor.
I don't think this is any different than any other of the boards that you serve on. I think whether it's the board member, whether it's the city person from Carlisle or Indianola, they're going to be responsive to the project itself. If, let's say, you're talking about a rural fire chief has a concern, there's a technical advisory committee which will meet on a pretty regular basis, I would anticipate, and take those concerns to the communications director, asking for changes where necessary. If that technical advisory committee refuses to adopt the changes that are requested, then that person has a right to go straight to the Board of Directors at one of their meetings and have their concern addressed right to the Board of Directors itself.
So you're also proposing that this 28E lasts for five years?
I'm sorry, Crystal, could you repeat that, please?
We actually, we changed the term to, it says three and a half in here right now because initially when it was proposed was, this would take effect on January 1st of this year.
Okay.
So you're right, the original proposal was five years. We ended up reducing that when a concern was brought to us about the length.
Oh, yeah, to three, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Hold on just a second here. I want to double-check something here. Which part of the agreement was it that had the timeline in it? I saw it here just a moment ago.
Termination of Agreement, Section 12.
Section 12, okay. Okay, yeah, there I see. That was the change that, I just want to make sure it was there.
It is.
Because I had the preliminary copy, which is the draft, which had the five in it, so I understand why she's asking the question.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I understand. Okay. Are there any other questions or others from the county general public that'd like Maybe Ben would like to just come up here and talk a moment.
Just want to say thank you to the county. This has been a long time in coming and a lot of discussion and a lot of time spent with each of the communities, taking their interests into consideration and making sure we have something, a good framework moving forward. I think it's a great example of how we can work together as partner entities to try to take the interests of our residents that we serve into consideration and raising the level of service and quality of care. So I just want to thank all of you for your involvement in the joint meetings and the many public meetings that we've had throughout this, and to thank our county attorney for the great job putting it together and working with all parties and all sides. So thanks.
Thank you. Now, it's Ben Reeves, city manager for Indianola.
Sorry, Doug.
Any others that would like to make comment? I think we're at a point, then, we need to make a decision here, don't we, to approve this?
You can make a motion to approve.
I can make a motion, but I do have a question.
Absolutely.
Like, do we need to be in a public hearing for the public to talk in this particular situation? Like, are we, just a protocol question?
I don't believe so.
Okay, great. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the new WarrenCom name and Warren County Joint Communications Center 28E agreement. The only point of clarity is the term of the 28E agreement. In the agreement, it says five years. My motion will include a three-and-a-half-year term of the agreement.
Actually, it's stated in here correctly.
Oh, it is stated correctly?
Yes.
The last one that I sent out.
Yes, it is. It's right here.
Excellent.
So the one that's in our packet does, did have the amended change to three-and-a-half years.
Excellent. Okay, so we're locked in.
I think it would be wise for us to just approve the document as presented, correct?
Yes, and I have a clean one that doesn't say draft on it.
Oh, okay. We'll assume that it's the same.
It is the same.
Okay. So your motion, then, just to restate it, is to approve the 28E agreement as presented to us today in draft format?
Correct.
Do we have a second? I will second that motion. Roll call.
McIntyre?
No.
Heeter?
Aye.
Snell?
Aye.
We will go now to, thank you, Doug. We will go now to item number 11, which is to receive and file reports for General Assistance and Veterans Affairs.
I'll make a motion to receive and file the General Assistance and Veteran Affairs reports, and if there's anybody from those departments that would like to go over the report, that would be welcomed.
I think I see General Assistance is here. Just for the record, state your day.
Sarah Downard with General Assistance.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for me today regarding the report?
Why don't you give us just a quick update and a few of the highlights from the reports you presented today?
Sure. For the actual fiscal year, we are currently, have served a total of 117 households or clients. For the month of January, we helped 12 households with rent, five households with utilities. We have the breakdown of the different cities there and the actual fiscal budget and the remaining budget on there as well.
It's interesting that Indianola is the predominant recipient of those. Is there any understanding why that might be versus the other communities?
I think population may have some of that to do with, we've got a lot. Norwalk usually comes in second, and historically Carlisle then third. Those are larger communities in the county. We do have a growing support system in Norwalk with our collaborators over there. The NAMA Norwalk Area Ministerial Association has been doing a very wonderful job of help collaborating and coordinating to make sure that the households are being met in the best way that we can, since our funds do not typically make a family whole.
With the changes that we just approved earlier today, could you speak to how that may change how your program will work or affect members of the community?
I think we'll be able to reach a broader spectrum of households with the raise to the 200% federal poverty level. It's going to be a small percentage, but in the grand scheme of things, that's going to make a really big difference to those households. The dollar total per household, if you, I didn't bring any of the reports, but from the average percentage of vacancies in Warren County for rentals was, last time I checked, under 6% of the whole population of rentals. And then in combination with the trend of the landlords raising rents recently, has been going up, on average, probably $100, and that is also kind of another reflection to what we asked to have approved today. So I think that it will help families get better whole with their rent situation, so that's the main goal.
Okay. Any other thoughts?
Could you go for the public's benefit, what services that Warren County General Assistance has available? And, you know, just so if anybody's hearing this that needs a little bit of help, or you know somebody that needs help, what areas can they come to Warren County, to you, and receive some assistance?
Yep. Warren County is going to assist financially with rent. The deciding factors are going to be based on your household size, your income for the household, and.
You don't need to go into that level of detail. Just, we help people with utilities, we help people with rental agreements, we help people with, I mean, could you go through the list of things?
Yep.
Just overview.
Rent for households in the Warren County, and then utilities. We also, in some exceptions, fund funerals or burials or cremations. And then also, in some situations, we're helping out with a medical fund, like a prescription medication or eyeglasses for a house or individual.
Thank you.
Good. Good. Thank you.
That's all I got.
Yeah. Any other presentations or thoughts? Otherwise, we have a motion to receive and file the reports from General Assistance. I don't believe we've actually voted on that yet, have we? No.
And we just need a second. You have to address the pair.
I'll second.
Yep, second.
Oh, we got a second from Crystal.
Okay.
Roll call.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Heeter?
Aye.
Snell?
Aye.
Okay. Now we are to Supervisors' reports.
I'd like to go first on this one, please. It's been a busy couple of weeks for the Board of Supervisors, mainly relative to budget. This is when we certify our budget for the year, so it's been busy. But I just wanted to just say a few words, a few words on a good meeting that I had this session around the Auditor's Office. I was invited into a team meeting, and I appreciate the auditor allowing me to come in because you really get an opportunity to meet, you know, get to know the people within that department, and you get an opportunity to understand their challenges. And I want to say that I was thoroughly impressed with what's been going on within the Auditor's Department in the last three months or so. They've done everything from going paperless. You know, that's one, we talk about it, efficiency-wise, what are we going to do around here to, you know, do things better with less money? And we talk about it an awful lot. And going paperless is one efficiency technique that you can do to get more done with less. But that's just one of many things that this department is doing. We had a credit card issue in Warren County for a long time, where we couldn't figure out, you know, who should have a credit card, who should be authorized to have it, how the paperwork and receipts flow through. That is now cleaned up. And, you know, it seems like in pretty short order, things seem to be getting more efficient in the Auditor's Office, and it was really rewarding. And that's a very good culture in there as well. I mean, culture is something we try to build in our, you know, things we're involved in, where people can come here and really enjoy and are positive about what they're doing. They thrive in this environment, and I'm really seeing that in the Auditor's Office too. So thank you to the Auditor's Office. Thanks for letting me be a part of your meeting, and I really learned a lot and really appreciated it. So thank you. And that's all I got for my report.
Crystal, do you want to share anything?
Yes. We've had four work sessions as a part of this past two weeks. We had, I had a WRA board meeting, attended the ISAC University from January 17th to 18th, attended our exploratory EMS committee at Northern Warren Fire three times. We've had a VA commission meeting. I attended the EPA Zoom meeting. We had a closed session for the Board of Supervisors. Employee department head evaluations, three of them, attended the Squaw Creek Town Public Meeting for Supervisors' Update, and we had another special meeting, we had a special meeting for the Board of Supervisors, took various phone calls, some personal visits concerning roads, and met with state EMS director. Thank you.
I'm going to defer on my report today, and we'll move on to public input. At this point in time, the board will not take any action on any comments that may be made in public. If you would like to come forward, you have three minutes. We'd ask that you use civil language in your presentation, and we will not take any action on anything that's been stated. Sorry. Come on. State your name and address.
Good morning. I'm Craig Hill, a Warren County resident, rural resident. Need an address, Mark, or? 10-438-213th Avenue, Acworth, Iowa. Yeah. I'd like to speak to the budget process, and as a supervisor, you all have broad powers and authority. You are the governing body of Warren County, and we respect that. One of your numerous functions is the construction approval of a budget, and we rely on you for that. But you don't have a free pass. You don't get to do whatever you seek to do. You have limits placed on you by the legislature, by the judicial branch, and by the executive branch of the state of Iowa. However limited, taxpayers do have some oversight as well. They have the ability to appeal a budget. Structurally, it's there for us to use when it's needed, when we perceive, for example, that a budget is inappropriate or inconsistent with the standards that are set by the state of Iowa. One year ago, I signed a petition to appeal, as did many other taxpayers in Warren County, to appeal the budget. The state of Iowa agreed with our appeal, concluding that you had exceeded your authority and you were proposing excessive ending fund balance. The ruling was in favor of the taxpayer. The concerns of the taxpayer were validated. The concerns of the taxpayer were validated, and you were forced to make corrections in that budget. Today, you have a broad range of legal choices in how you craft a responsible budget going forward, and that is your job to do. How you respond to this is a choice, and your response could be to get angry, hateful to the state of Iowa, and their authorities, call them out, stamp your feet, throw a childish tantrum, and use an assortment of vulgar words to describe those individuals of the state of Iowa. I wouldn't recommend it. Your response also could be pick out individuals on the petition, those taxpayers that raised their hand and said, is this valid? And is it a legal request for the budget? And you could stamp your feet, throw a tantrum, use assorted vulgar words to describe those individuals that filed the appeal. I wouldn't recommend that either. What I do recommend is that you do for your constituents a job that is professional. Put your arms around the staff, craft a legal and valid budget that responsibly meets the needs of this county. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak? Again, state your name for the record and your address.
Adam Hill, 11028 165th Avenue, Indianola. I'll just take a moment to address some comments that were made on January 24th budget session. Never thought I would have to address a governing body of this, but as a governing body, as a Board of Supervisors, I would be embarrassed, you should be embarrassed, to allow and say insulting, disparaging, and untruthful comments about an individual member of this community. It shows a lack of leadership and professionalism that elected officials should uphold. Thank you.
Anybody else that would like to speak? If not, we'll move on to adjournment here. The next meeting will be February 20th, 2024, at 5:00 PM in this room. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion.
I think we got a second from Crystal. Roll call.
McIntyre?
Second.
Hail?
Aye.
That's right. Heater?
Aye.
Snell?
Aye. Meeting's adjourned.